Okay, it's 7:03 PM. It is Tuesday, April 13th, and I am calling to order the regular meeting of the Common Council of the City of Platteville. Tonight, we're meeting primarily by Zoom. Adam or Jody, if you're in the council chambers, are there others who have joined you?
There is not. There is just myself and Chief McKinley is in the council.
Okay, and so we will then start with roll call. Actually, I don't see Candace, but maybe she's here.
Here.
There she is, okay.
Barbara Doss.
Here.
Ken Killian.
Here.
Robin Klein.
Here.
Isaac Shanley.
Here.
Eileen Nichols.
Eileen will join us a bit later. She had a family emergency.
Okay, very good. Kathy Kop.
Here.
And Jason Arts.
Here.
Okay, the first item on our agenda tonight, oh, before I start, by my count, Jody did send me the spreadsheet, and I believe we are welcoming between 13 and 14 UW Platteville students tonight to our meeting. So to all of you, welcome, and I am assuming you could find the agenda and supporting materials on the city's website. So thank you for joining us. Some of you reached out to me in advance, but some didn't, but whichever. So welcome to our UWP students. Now, we'll go on to the first item on our agenda, which is consideration of the consent calendar. The following items may be approved on a single motion and vote due to their routine nature. Please indicate if you would prefer separate discussion or action. We have the council minutes from March the 9th, the special meeting, and March the 23rd, both the special and the regular meeting, payment of bills. We have financial reports for March, appointments to boards and commissions. I tonight will reappoint Joanne Wilson, who was appointed for like two months to the Public Housing Authority. I will reappoint her now as a regular member. Licenses, one and two-year operator licenses to sell and serve alcohol. We have two permits. One is the walk-run permit from the Kiwanis Club for a 5K run-walk on Saturday, May 8th, from 8 to noon. My understanding is that will be both in-person and virtual, according to the document that I read, if I read it right. And then we have a street closing permit for St. Augie's University Church for a activity at the end of April, I believe, that they're using their courtyard, but wanted additional space for social distancing. And then the last item is that we have our council organizational meeting, which always takes place the third Tuesday in April. So we'll have that next Tuesday at 6:00 PM, and the proposed agenda is there. We will have an additional action item after discussions today with the Wisconsin League of Municipalities, and Adam will be sending information about budget priorities, state budget priorities, as they relate to shared revenue, transportation aid, aid for municipal services, and shared revenue. But we'll, we have some charts and graphs we're gonna share, and we'll have that. Consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
I move that we approve the consent calendar.
Oh, second.
Okay, we have a motion by Ken and a second by Isaac to approve that that calendar as presented. Candace will vote.
Doss.
Yes.
Killian.
Yes.
Klein.
Yes.
Shanley.
Yes.
Kop.
Yes.
Arts.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is citizens' comments, observations, and petitions, if any. Candace tells me that no one among those that registered had registered to actually say anything, so and there's no extra people in the council chambers, so I think we will then up, Eric, I see your hand raised, I believe. Unmute yourself, Erica, we won't hear you.
Thank you. Yeah, this is Eric Fleisch, the museum director. Wanted to make an announcement that May 1st museums will be reopening for the tour season of May through October, and May 1st is community free day, so with presentation of your proof of residency in Platteville, free admission on opening day, May 1st. That's in celebration of three big milestone anniversaries, the 50th anniversary of the completion of the mining museum, the 45th of the opening of the Bevins Mine, and the 40th anniversary of the opening of the Rallo James Museum. So thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you, Eric. And that would be, I see no other hands raised, so we will move on then to reports. In your packet, there were reports from Parks, Recreation, Forestry and Recreation. Jason, anything to add?
Nope, nothing to add.
I would just note that I did see on the website that our campground at Mountain View Park is, the water has been turned back on, and the campground is officially open. Police and Fire Commission, Kathy.
On, nothing to add.
I have some comments.
On, on Police and Fire, or?
Police and Fire Commission, please.
Okay.
Well, I'll just start off by saying I've watched quite a bit of the trial up at Minneapolis, and sort of brought up.
You went on mute. Ken, there we, up. You're still on mute.
I was unmuted.
All right. Go ahead, you've.
I had some questions about Police and Fire. One is, as far as, whatever you call it, who develops the manual as far as procedures, policies for the City of Platteville?
Okay, the question, Kathy, or Adam, or I think Doug is in the council chambers. Chief McKinley, would you like to answer, who develops the policy and procedure manual for policing within the City of Platteville?
We utilize LexiPol to have a working policy, but then we tailor that to the needs of our community and our police department.
Did you spell that, Doug?
When you say "we," who is "we"? Is the police union involved in this? Is anybody from the public involved? Is the city manager involved? So who's all involved in developing these policies?
Sure. First off, LexiPol, L-E-X-I-P-O-L, LexiPol.
Okay.
And we do, we have the command staff, which includes both lieutenants, help with the policies, our sergeants, and the police union has input on the finished products.
Now, what is the role of the Police and Fire Commission in terms developing any of any of these policies?
The purview of the Police and Fire Commission in Platteville is hiring, firing, and significant discipline.
So they're not involved in developing the policy?
No.
Okay. Then, I was reading that the person at Minneapolis had 17 misconduct complaints against him. How could that number possibly get to be that great? And do we have complaints received here in Platteville, and we don't hear about them?
I can't speak to that individual's disciplinary record. We very infrequently have citizen complaints. We have instances that we look into that don't rise to the level of complaint, but again, I can't speak to Derek Chauvin's personnel file.
And my last question, is it possible for me, as a council member, to look at your policies and so forth?
Sure.
And how big a document or documents would I be dealing with?
I'm trying to think in terms of pages. I only deal with it on the computer, so that to say how many pages can, it'd be tough. To get you a paper draft of it, it would be lengthy.
Okay, could I get a website to look at some of them?
We might be able to get you a flash drive that would have, or a disk that would have the PDF copy of the policy manual.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Ken. Any other questions? Otherwise, we'll move on to the other reports that were in the packet. The Water and Sewer Financial Report for March was in the packet. The Airport Financial Report for March was in the packet, and our monthly department progress reports. Any questions, comments, concerns, suggestions on any of these reports?
Yes, I have a couple.
Okay.
One is with Nicola, and I'm wanting to find out what is meant by.
I think you muted yourself, Ken. And we can't hear you.
Ken, do you have something sitting on your spacebar?
Okay.
All right.
Clear. Okay, my question is for Nicola.
Yes.
This question is about participation in city cemetery management and workflows.
Sure.
What does that mean?
Yes.
Howard takes care of this.
Oh, well, actually, what we have come to understand is that there's actually many different personnel involved in in the functionings of the cemeteries and of cemetery record-keeping, and that does include primarily Nick and Howard, but it also includes the finance department and and community development with GIS, and so so Adam has been spearheading a group meeting to understand what our workflows are related to the start-to-finish process of somebody that wants to buy a plot and then securing that plot, and then, you know, the street department's work involved in that. So that's what that item is. It's a continuing process that we're going through.
Okay, my next question for you is implementation of a new AP module.
Yes, so there's actually two modules that we are implementing in 2021 in the finance department that were included in the finance budget. One is for the accounts payable. It's an upgrade so that we can take more of our process online. Invoices, incoming invoices to the city will be scanned into the database so that department directors and other users of the system will be able to pull up those invoices right on their computers and not have to have vast quantities of paper files of all these invoices. And directors will also be able to approve their invoices online. It will provide accessibility for staff if they were to be in a situation where they were working from home. So that's the AP module, and then there's also a budget module that we're working on this year as well.
Okay, my next question is for city manager. I assume as far as the fire station, we're gonna talk about that later.
Correct.
Okay, and then as far as tide, we'll talk about that some later.
Correct.
Okay, my next question is about marketing. Where is the Platteville pickaxe today? Video series? And so, will we be seeing that as a council?
Yes.
Or not?
Yep, so in the weekly updates, the first video we did with that was the ice rink. So that is something that is on our Facebook page, and then I also try to include those links for you guys, but yes, the next video that actually our communication specialist, Julie Richards, is working on, which we're gonna be working on this week, is going to be kind of a overview of City Hall, so showcasing all the kind of changes that have been done over the last couple of years. But yes, when we have those, we definitely will be sharing those, not only with the community, but with you guys as well.
Next is the community planning development. I'm interested in job description that was modified for the GIS specialist planner position, which is now open, I believe, and will be soon documented as far as filling. Joe Carroll here?
Yes.
How was the description modified?
We basically narrowed the duties of the position, so it's primarily focused just on the GIS system. We discovered that that was a big part of Lori's position, but she really didn't have time to work on it, so she was unable to get ahead on building the system up to the level of what we wanted it to be.
Will this new person be working on historic preservation in parks?
No.
Who'll be in charge of that?
Rick Rinnekerd and myself.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I guess, let's see. Luke Peters. Is he there? Oh, yes, there he is. What is happening as far as the Emerald Ash Bar and the the grant that you received? How is that progressing? You got about 18,500 or something like that?
Yeah, so we.
24 people working on this?
Um.
Or applicants?
I couldn't tell you the exact number where we're at right now, but what I would tell you is that all the money has been claimed by our residents. So we are currently starting a waiting list now, so if residents fail to remove their ash trees in time, that we can reissue that to other residents, so it's for removal and replacement of ash trees. In terms of progression of the Emerald Ash Bar, I'm hoping everyone has seen the evidence of it at this point. It's kind of hard to miss. You'll notice all of your ash trees will have flecking, so they almost have a white, the barks are turning white, and that's actually woodpeckers. It's attacking the trees. It's very prominent in Platteville at this point. We are in the thick of it, and those trees are only going to get worse and worse. So if you see that happening to a tree, I would strongly encourage any of our residents out there to contact a, you know, an arborist, and to look into what options you have for removing that tree, because it's only going to get more and more dangerous and more and more difficult to remove that tree, because the bark underneath is, or the the living material under the bark is actually getting eaten away, and your tree is going to get more and more fragile. So we will be seeing lots of trees coming down in our future, which is unfortunate, but that's one of the reasons we've been trying to ring that alarm bell for the past probably five years. So hopefully, some of our residents were able to get ahead of the curve a little bit, and you know, help their fellow residents out by, in essence, getting out of the way so that we're not overwhelmed, and our arborists aren't overwhelmed in town.
Is there any word about any future grants coming for removal?
We certainly could look at applying, reapplying again, although I would tell you that this grant we had has been extended for the past three years, and it took three years for us to to fill our positions on that, to give away that $18,000. So, you know, and it'd be more difficult now, I would say, Ken, because the selling point on that was what I said, trying to help people to get ahead of the curve. Now that the curve is here, it's a little bit less unique. This is not a problem that is unique to Platteville, and it's, you're going to have, you know, the idea originally was pretty novel to get ahead, but now it's going to be more difficult to sell that as a unique project, but that doesn't mean we can't try.
Thank you. Those are my questions.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody else have questions, comments, or suggestions as it relates to the department progress reports? Okay, if not, then we'll move on into the action portion of our agenda. The first action item is review and revocation of a City of Platteville taxi driver license. And Adam, I believe you're the person who will speak about this.
Yes, that is correct. So in section, kind of as the staff note indicates, in section 31.18 and section 31.19 of the City of Platteville Municipal Code, this is where it references anything in regards to taxi and/or taxi driver licenses, and then also talks about the framework under section 31.11, in which a, you know, particular taxi license could be revoked. And within our ordinance, there are obviously seven different kind of areas in which the city can either suspend or revoke a license by common council action. So what has occurred is the City of Platteville has determined that one of our taxi driver license holders has become in violation of section 31.11 of the City of Platteville Municipal Code. And city staff, who has been working with, obviously, the municipal attorney, was directed to proceed with a revocation or review of a taxi license issued to Mr. Keepers pursuant to the city's authority under section 349.24 of the state statutes, and also the City of Platteville Municipal Code. So proper notice was given to Mr. Keepers regarding the intention of the City of Platteville to review or revocation of the taxi license via certified letter that was issued on 3/25, explaining that the city would need to receive a request for a public hearing and writing on or before Tuesday, March 30th. The city did not receive an official notice. So the city staff is recommending, based on review with our municipal attorney, that the Common Council essentially revocates the taxi license issued to Mr. Keeper pursuant to the City of Platteville's municipal ordinance, chapter 31, section 31.11.
Okay, folks, I can make a quick, Kathy, any questions?
No.
Jason? Ken?
No question.
Isaac?
No questions.
Robin?
No questions.
I don't believe Eileen has joined us, so I won't be asking her. I have no questions. Do I hear a motion?
I make a motion. I move for the City of Platteville to revoke the taxi license issued to Mr. Vincent, excuse me, Vincent Keepers pursuant to chapter 31, section 31.11 of the City of Platteville Municipal Code.
Well, second.
Okay, we have a motion by Isaac and a second by Jason to revoke this taxi license. Candace will vote.
Doss?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Shanley?
Yes.
Kop?
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is a Ward of Contracts 7-21, Street Maintenance, and Howard, I believe that's you.
Yes, thank you. This is our annual project, and last year, we did a mill and an overlay, but previous years, it was a thin overlay. I did send out a corrected copy by email this afternoon because I had misunderstood the budget number. Instead of 120,000 from the wheel tax funding, there's 110,000 from the wheel tax funding. The rest of the staff note is correct. The difference would be that if the council chooses to do all but the last block of Lutheran Street, we would have a deficit of 12,194 cents that would need to be covered by a shortfall. If the council chooses to include that final block of Lutheran Street, the shortfall would be 24,542.78. I have the, I have a spreadsheet that shows all the different projects that we have going on, and even if the council selects all of Lutheran Street, we do have savings from the Dewey Street project that would cover this project, so it's your pleasure or preference at this point.
Okay, questions, comments, or otherwise? I lost my pictures. Kathy?
Howard, what is the remaining balance from the Dewey Street project? What, what, what kind of money is left there?
If we do all of the projects, including all of this Dewey Street, I'm, I've got just under 155,000 left.
Okay, and the cost for that extra section on Lutheran is what?
It's 12,352, but I included that in that other number that I just gave you, so if you include that, we will still have 100, just short of 155,000.
Okay, thank you.
And any questions?
No questions, but I think if we have the, if we can cover it with money, I would be for doing, you know, what, the full length of the, the street.
Okay, Ken?
The only question I had is, I guess, a side question, I would call it, last sentence in paragraph two. I'm trying to figure out the meaning of that, because that's saying that our request for bids went out prior to authorized release of funds, but what does that last sentence say? We did not use the grant funding last year because of our, because our bid went out prior to the authorized release of funds. What does that say?
That, that's exactly what it means. We received an allocation of the $9,100 from Grant County to use in either 2020 or 2021. We, they were still deciding things and doing the paperwork when we sent out our bids for the mill and overlay last year, so we couldn't use that money last year. We can use it this year, and that's what I was trying to get at, is we will use that allocation towards this project this year, and that's all included in that budgeting that I was talking about.
So these are bid requests? They're not bids, they're bid requests?
Well, yes, we, we. yes, we, we solicited for bids in the paper and directly to contractors in, in the normal fashion, in accordance with statutes. The thing was that our bid last year went out prior to the paperwork being signed. So we couldn't use the, the grant monies last year.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Isaac?
Oh, just a couple of things. So I would be in agreeance with probably Kathy and Jason on that the funds are there that we should finish the Lutheran streak, one block that was dropped off. But my main concern would be the portion of West Gridley and South Hickory Street. So I was driving through these streets and seeing that some of these have been done before and understanding the concept of how this works. That particular portion seems to me that there is some pretty good under erosion potholes, ripples that I don't think that putting the money into this overlay on that section of the street is worth doing because I don't think you're fixing any of the problems. I think all you're going to do is expedite the problem even further. And again, I just think that portion of it is a waste of money because that street needs to be completely redone beyond just some overlays. Especially when you get more towards the, the ninety-degree corner that's at Gridley and Hickory Street. You know, those aren't just inch holes or bottles. Those are some pretty good ripples and stuff, you know, if we're going to do any of the, I can't remember the exact term, I think the grinding down, that's where we need to be grinding down and doing some of the overlays there. So.
Howard, would you like to comment on that? Because I felt the same way. I've driven, I drive that road on a, on a very regular basis, and I don't see how a little mill or over, a little overlay is going to do anything to that. A Band-Aid is not even, I mean, a Band-Aid would be better.
Well, that, that's basically what it is, is a Band-Aid to get us a few more years so that we can put money into doing a more thorough reconstruction.
Frankly, I think it's money wasted.
And I would have to agree, Barb. I think, you know, if there's another project or another street that Howard has been looking at doing an overlay on, but has put off to do this, I'd rather see another street that is relatively flat or down, have the overlay than this. Again, I just think all you're doing is going to be create larger holes, larger ripples. And I'll use your term. I don't even think a Band-Aid is the right term. I think it's just, honestly, I just think it's a waste of money on that, on those two streets right there.
Robin?
Um, well, I can't say that I went over there and checked that out, so I can't picture exactly what you're speaking of right now, but I do get the sense of it just might need to get worse to prove that it has to be addressed at a bigger level. So is it a case of get worse before it gets better? And I, I mean, it's fair. I think Howard should be able to weigh in heavily if he really thinks that it, it buys time in a significant way, but does it kick it down the road further? And just make a bigger project or bigger headache? So I hear you, Isaac and Barb. I could get behind that notion.
Howard, do you have any clue as to how much of this project is that road? And, and how long it is? And if you didn't do that mill and overlay, what you would do instead?
Um, let me review the numbers here. I, I don't have it right off the top here. I can, I can pull that up quickly. I, I thought that was included in the, in the packet. I overlooked that part. But let me see what I.
It's twelve hundred and thirty feet.
Yeah.
And I don't know that this is done by the foot.
Actually, I think it's twelve hundred and forty feet.
It's done, it's done by the, it's done by the ton. And so our, our estimated cost, based on what I estimate the tonnage would be on that street, it's going to be just under twenty thousand dollars worth.
I feel like I should add a little more to my comment. And in just the thought about kicking it down the road, how do we maintain it as a high priority project if we put the Band-Aid on it? Do we at least afford the local people traveling on that road all the times, all the time that they travel on it, save them some wear and tear on their vehicles in the next year or two if we put that overlay on there? I mean, is that at least help them out, or does it really just allow us to pretend it's not a problem longer? Sorry, I didn't mean to say it so rudely.
It'll be a little bit of both, but the, the thing is that we have, we have used it on very poor roads before to extend the life three, four, or five years until we can try to fit it within our budget. And that's really, that's really about all that you can expect out of something like that. But as, as you mentioned, Robin, in those three or four years, it will reduce the wear and tear, the, the, the major potholes on that road for that period of time. But we need to, to try to make sure that we include that as much as we can in our, in our CIP for full reconstruction at some point.
Well, I do agree it's a bad road. One of the worst in town. And I don't know if I've ever seen it on your CIP.
It has not been on there yet. Because we have plenty of bad roads.
Okay, folks, this is a contract on for action tonight. The action items suggest that the suggestion that staff has made is to authorize a hundred and thirty-one thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars and seventy-three cents for thin overlay and mill and overlay. And the streets suggested were western, north, must be North Hickory. Oh, no, pardon me. That's not, that's not Hickory. It's Washington, North Washington Street, a little piece of road from that goes by Oui Gray. And this road plus West Main Street. Some by the museum and some up by Highland Park. So what's your pleasure?
Well, I'd make a motion to move, move toward a contract seven dash twenty-one, street maintenance to irreconstruction for all the streets, for the thin overlay and mill and overlay and the amount of, which ought to be kind of this blank, but without the exception of West Gridley and South Hickory Street. And with the addition of the one block section on Lutheran Street.
Okay, we have a motion by Isaac to approve the contract with Iverson for street maintenance, thin overlay and overlay for the streets identified except for the Gridley, Hickory Street portion and including the extra block on Lutheran Street. We don't know the exact amount that'll be. I'm assuming it's going to be in the neighborhood of a hundred and thirteen to a hundred and fifteen thousand. I can't do the math. So we have a, we have a motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to approve the thin overlays, as proposed with the exception of the Hickory Street Gridley section and with the addition of the block on Lutheran. So Isaac and Ken, and so we'll vote. Candace?
Doc?
Dos? Yes. Killian?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Shanley?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
I just want to double check and make sure that Nichols didn't come in somewhere. I don't think so, but okay. Arts?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Now we're going to move on to contract twelve twenty-one. The Sanders Prime Pickleball Complex and tennis court resurfacing. And as we do that, I would be remiss if I didn't say we are welcoming at least seven, if not eight attendees tonight who are here in support of pickleball. So welcome to all of you, and I will go with Luke.
Yes, so we had the bid opening roughly one month ago for the Sanders Try and Pickleball Complex, which is an eight-court pickleball complex going in the southwest corner of Legion Park. We had three responsive bidders to our bid requests, the lowest of which was Owens Excavating with a base bid of two hundred and forty-eight thousand, two hundred and eighty-four dollars and fifty cents. That does include approximately twenty-seven thousand for the tennis court resurfacing and an additional roughly thirteen thousand dollars for additional excavating, which is requested by our baseball and softball programming. So while we're having excavation done in Legion Park, they would like to see an area created a little bit larger, which would allow for their expansion of their rookie fields. Along with that, on page, I believe it's a hundred and forty-five of your packet, I did include kind of a rough breakdown of our expenses and revenues within that bid. There were a total of eleven requests for alternate bids. Papa or the Platteville Area Pickleball Association is requesting that we award nine of those bids. The additional amount that would be is one hundred and seven thousand, eight hundred and fifty-one dollars and fifty cents for those nine alternate bids. The alternate bids would be for three-color courts, exterior fencing, or I'm sorry, interior fencing, expansion of our exterior fencing in two different areas. A sidewalk to the Broski Center, a patio, concrete pad, a yard hydrant, which would provide water to the pickleball courts, court lighting and the construction of a pavilion for shade and for spectator use. There are two bids that they're not looking to request. And I am happy to report at this time, they do have funding, so they're not asking the city to award any additional money. They do have funding in hand, along with the previous fifty thousand dollars contributed by the city to back this bid. And they're requesting that you award the total bid of three hundred and forty-eight thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars to Owens Excavating.
Okay. Questions? Get rid of that spreadsheet. Questions, comments, or concerns? Kathy?
Luke, I think we, we talked about this at the last meeting, but the two alternates that they are not going with for the mesh fencing is, is because, is not because they're not going to do it, but they are going to possibly do it themselves. Is that correct? So there, my question is, is, is the project going to have the mess, the mesh fencing?
So I, I'm just maybe just confusing terms slightly with what you're using, but it will not include vinyl coated fencing, but it would include wind screens, which are what are used on typically tennis courts or pickleball courts to help reduce the, the wind. And I would also add that beyond just reducing the wind, they're, they're typical found on courts as they provide kind of a more solid backdrop. When you're looking, you know, for a relatively small ball that's traveling quickly, it's sometimes hard to pick out if the background is, is, you know, very busy. So they typically, most courts will, will have them for that reason on their base lines.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions, Kathy? No. Jason?
Um, no other questions.
Okay. Ken?
No question.
Isaac?
No questions.
Robin?
Probably in there, but did you say when you hope to have it done?
Sure, I did not, but I can't. The goal is to have the courts opened and debuted at this year's Dairy Days. In fact, there is within the bids punishments or penalties to the bidder if they are not done by that timeline.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
And I also have no questions. So, folks, do I hear a motion?
I'll move to award contract twelve dash twenty-one, Sanders Try and Pickleball Complex and Tennis Record, Tennis Court Resurfacing with alternates A, B, C, D, F, G, H, I, and J to Owens Excavating at the bid price of three hundred and forty-eight thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars.
So we have a motion by Jason and a second by Ken to award contract twelve twenty-one for the pickleball complex and the tennis court resurfacing and the baseball or softball field expansion, I guess I would say. Candace will vote. Dos?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Shanley?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
I just double checked if Eileen came in. No? Motion carries. Okay, and I would congratulate the Pickleball Association on their very successful fundraising. I know you have a little bit more that you're looking for, but good work, group. So and that takes care of our action items for tonight. So we'll move on to information and discussion items. So the first of those is the Platteville Airport CIP project. And so now, I believe, Adam, you wrote the staff note on this.
That is correct. So I also see that we have a couple of members from the Airport Commission. So I see Dennis Cooley is on. I see Danny's on as well, and Elaine, the airport manager. So they'll obviously be able to assist in any questions that you may have, but what happened here is we brought this back to information and discussion because obviously there's been a couple of changes since the last time this was presented to the council. So as you see in the staff note, the Airport Commission held a special meeting on April sixth to continue kind of discussing the potential capital improvement project that they're looking at doing at the Platteville Municipal Airport. And the commission, after discussing kind of multiple scenarios, made the determination to move forward by requesting cost proposals for what is a seventy-foot by seventy-foot box hanger to be constructed along with a four-unit T-hanger. And then they have two kind of additional bids that they're asking potential, I guess, developers or construction companies to look at. And that is an alternate cost proposal to have two additional hangers added to the four. And then also the potential of increasing the box hanger to be seventy feet by eighty feet. So that is what has been sent out, and they're kind of looking at proposals and requests. So kind of going into, again, the budgeting and fiscal impact that this could have. So during the April sixth kind of twenty-twenty meeting, it was determined at this point in time, the Platteville Municipal Airport has been granted a total of three hundred and forty-seven thousand, twenty-seven dollars in what are FAA entitlements to be utilized towards CIP projects as of this year. It's projected the airport then will also receive an additional hundred and fifty thousand dollars in FAA entitlement dollars for calendar years twenty twenty to twenty twenty-four. So this would bring the estimated total of FAA entitlements available to about So this would bring the estimated total of FAA entitlements available to about eight hundred and twenty-four thousand, twenty-seven dollars. So if the Common Council recalls within the twenty twenty-one budget, we have started essentially allocating fifteen thousand dollars to be allocated towards airport projects. The budget intention would be to continue this funding source in the fiscal years twenty twenty to twenty twenty-four to supply a total of sixty thousand dollars for CIP projects to be utilized by the airport. So when you combine these two totals together, that puts us at about eight hundred and eighty-four thousand, twenty-seven dollars to be utilized that we're aware of towards this project. Working with Strands Associates, which is the engineering firm that has been kind of coming up with the designs and the potential plans for the airport CIP project. They're currently estimating the cost of just the base bid, which is again, the seventy foot by seventy foot hanger and the four tee hangers could range anywhere between one million to one point five million dollars. So obviously some of the concerns that have been addressed by council members was how this project would impact the city of Platteville's borrowing capacity or delay other projects in development. As I indicated kind of in the last meeting, but just to kind of recap, I was able to verify this project would be eligible for a revenue anticipation note. And then again, due to this being a revenue note versus a general obligation bond, this would not count against the city's official general obligation borrowing capacity limit. Because again, we have a guaranteed revenue source coming from the airport that would pay for this as well as, you know, the city would be earmarking tax dollars to essentially be utilized towards assisting this project. So once the Airport Commission has received obviously the cost estimates, a determination then is going to be made as to whether the project number one can be funded to begin with. That's something that obviously, you know, needs to be discussed, but then also kind of reviewing the available funding sources that are available. You know, there is the potential that there may be some other FAA entitlements that are kind of being discussed or other funding sources that could be utilized. So again, what will happen is when these bids come back, the Airport Commission will kind of review them and start working with Nicola and myself and kind of determining funding sources and how that would apply. Then that request would then be brought back to the Common Council for official discussion, consideration and approval if the council so chooses. So again, just to kind of update everybody, if, if the Airport Commission and city staff can verify the funding sources available, we'll be able to cover the proposed project. City staff would be recommending authorization to work with the Airport Commission and a local bank to enter into a revenue anticipation note. And again, this recommend would require the council to approve the proposed CIP project, the bid, and then also approve either the city staff to execute the note or for the note to be officially approved by the Common Council. And I guess I will allow Dennis or anybody, did I miss anything? I think that was the highlights.
I think the big thing that, no, Adam, I think you did a great job of capturing the essence of what we're talking about. Just understand that the reason we stop at twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, we had borrowed entitlement money for, for a different project that we completed from the Portage Airport. So we get no entitlement money from the FAA in that year. But we do have indication that we can move back any other projects. We have at least one more year, possibly two years beyond that in case of, of a cost increase. But I just want to make sure everybody realizes we've got a very good subcommittee, a budget and operations subcommittee that's formed. It's led by Chuck Rundy and, and the, we've got a budget for this project. So our, we just need to get some numbers. And I think the big thing now is to get a bid and see what, what the, what we can get for the, for the amount. And we're looking at around a million dollar budget right now for that project. But we do know we might have to stretch a little bit. Material costs are higher than they were pre-COVID and, and different things there. But we do know that we've got allocate, and Elaine's doing an incredibly good job. Elaine and Andy working a relationship with the Bureau of Aeronautics. They are working. Joshua Holbrook, our, our project manager and Mark Ruskowski, who's a graduate at UW-Platteville, who heads up the procurement area for the Bureau, the money person at the Bureau, they are working hard to find us more revenue, more, more monies to use. So we, we think we've got a great project. We think we've got it covered. We don't have a blank check here. We know we have a budget we're working under. So anyway, just, I think you did a great job, Adam, and, and we want to, what we got is our waiting list grew again. We've got people on our waiting list to move forward and we have aging, aging tee hangers that need to be replaced. So this is a project that gets us set up for the future.
Okay. Kathy, questions, comments?
Um, a comment, as I, an ex officio on the commission, I just want to reiterate from my perspective, this was this, the, everything that they're doing at the airport, when they started talking about tee hangers and all of that is very foreign to me. I have learned a lot, but I am very, very impressed with the members of the commission. The expertise that they bring to the table, how well they explain things and how much conversation they're having on where we're at with, with the money, where, what we can do, but also to make it a priority with economic development in the community to keep moving ahead with the airport.
Great. Thank you. Jason, comments?
Um, no, just looking forward to kind of seeing the numbers and how things proceed from here.
Thank you.
Ken, questions, comments?
I have no questions or comments.
Isaac?
We all right.
Okay, Isaac?
No questions or comments? No questions or comments?
I just was feeling what Kathy was kind of speaking to, that this seems to be a really great example of we have a commission and they take their job very seriously. And when they come to us asking for an ask, they've got it very well researched. So I feel very comfortable getting behind it.
Eileen, welcome. Any questions? Unmute yourself.
I don't have any question. Thanks.
And, and just so that you know, every time you speak, you also freeze.
I guess. Unstable, unstable, unstable internet.
I guess you just, you just have that kind of personality tonight, right? Okay, and Adam, a revenue anticipation note means that the revenue stream to pay the note has to be intact before it's issued. Is that what a revenue, I mean, help us understand what a revenue anticipation?
Yeah. So essentially how a revenue, revenue anticipation note works is when you go to a local bank, they will give you the ability. You know, sometimes you can stretch out there where you don't have to pay interest right away or you can only pay principal depending on the revenue source. But what it requires is that you have to have some type of, you have to have money in order to pay for it. So with, with this scenario, the airport is getting a guaranteed revenue source from the FAA entitlements. So what they want to know is that essentially if you take out, you know, if we go to a local bank and it's four, five, six years is what we have is the length of the, of the note, that there is a guaranteed revenue source that has been approved to pay for those, you know, principal and interest costs. So it kind of as Dennis said, you know, there, there's a budget we're, we're trying to work with. And if we have to, you know, figure out ways to pinch pennies or, you know, do only certain parts of it, that, that's going to kind of be the next step. But essentially, you know, the conversations we've had is we were hoping we were in the ballpark. And then with all the costs of everything, we've seen kind of an increase. We just want to know, you know, the, the city and the airport needs to get, know what exactly is that estimate? So we then can come in front of the council and kind of look at, okay, what does this mean for, how do we pay for it? So.
Okay. All right. And let's move on to the next information and discussion item, which is highway painting. Howard?
Uh, thank you. This is our annual painting of central lines and other, other pavement markings. Our, uh, what we're planning on doing is as soon as Main Street Mill and Overlay is done, we would repaint the striping on, on that section of Main Street. And we would repaint Valley Road. Alternate A was based on the alternate for our thin overlay and, and Mill and Overlay. So in order to, to match that other project that we just awarded, we really do need to do the alternate A for the, for the painting. Alternate B would be to do center line paving, the stop bars, sharrows and turn arrows on Main Street. Alternate C I had put in for outlining the crosswalks. That came in a lot higher than I expected. So I'm recommending that we do the base bid and alternates A and B only for this prod, for this contract.
Okay. Um, questions or comments? Kathy?
No questions.
Jason?
Um, no questions.
Ken?
No question.
Isaac?
No questions.
Robin?
To get to my mute, um, just a thought, I guess, we had discussed the potential for that crosswalk to be painted in front of, I just lost it, Oldsmoke. And wondering if the council or community would ever consider sponsoring themed crosswalks on Main Street and kind of livening up downtown with some artwork on those crosswalks. So picking that painting off for a year doesn't bother me at all. If we want to consider some other projects, that would be fun. And I have any other questions?
Okay. Eileen?
No questions.
Okay. And Howard, this budget item comes from where? Is this a regular budget item?
Yes, it's, it's part of our standard CIP. It was budgeted at thirty thousand and with alternates A and B, it'll be just under twenty-one.
Okay. All right. If there are no more questions, let's go on to ordinance amendments to chapter twenty-one subdivisions. And Joe, I believe that's you.
Correct. So this is a kind of a comprehensive proposed amendment to the subdivision ordinance of chapter twenty-one. We, we have this on this evening, just preliminary information, basically. The current schedule that we have for this to be reviewed and approved, it wouldn't be public hearing in action until the May eleventh meeting. So we'll have two meetings where it'll be on for information discussions. Since there is a lot of information to go through. So tonight I didn't really anticipate going through section by section. I just wanted to give an overview and give it, and give it in front of the council. So you have a chance to review the information. And then the next two meetings, we could go into more detail, but obviously if anybody has any questions, I'll address those tonight. But kind, kind of a summary of what the changes are being recommended. When the Plan Commission first started working on some zoning ordinance changes as a means of implementing the housing study, at, at that time, there was a a conversation that came up about conservation subdivisions. So we, we kind of started the process last year. And with that process, so this is kind of a continuation of that where we are proposing some additional language in the subdivision ordinance to allow for conservation subdivisions. It's just another opportunity for developers to propose a different type of development than we typically have in Platteville now. So this language would allow for that. We've got some changes recommended, basically as an implementation of the sidewalk policy, which the council has already approved. So this would be primarily addressing the sidewalks within new subdivisions, obviously. You will notice there's a, a large section that is being eliminated regarding the parkland dedication requirements. This whole section really became almost redundant or unnecessary several years ago when we adopted the parkland impact fees. So instead of requiring the parkland dedication, we do the fee in lieu of dedication. It, it is possible to have both, but as it sits right now, the, there's a statutory requirement that says in order to do a, a parkland dedication requirement, you have to have a study that's completed that kind of determines the need for additional parkland and then determines the amount of the fee or the value of the land equivalency that would be dedicated. Since we have not done a fee that meets those requirements, we legally cannot do a parkland dedication requirement in ordinance now. So the city attorney is recommending that we just eliminate that section at this point. If we ever decide to go down that requirement, that road of making a requirement as part of this ordinance, we could do the study and then implement that change at that time. So right now we'll just remove it from the ordinance. There's a series of changes throughout the document where where the changes are recommended to better reflect the, the process, the approval process, review process and kind of the requirements that the city has. This is basically just because the ordinance was written probably thirty some years ago and the, the process has changed in that period of time. So it's updating the policy. We also did a review of a couple of model ordinances that I came across that I think have better, clearer language as far as the requirements of a subdivision ordinance. So I incorporate some of those changes in there. You know, including things like the, we always require a development agreement with the developer as part of a subdivision approval. So I included those types of language changes in the document. So like I said, I, my intent was really just to get it in front of you this evening, give you a chance to realize why we're making these changes and give you a chance to read through it because it is a pretty lengthy document. Anybody have any questions at this point?
Okay, before I take questions in general, Isaac, you're on the Plan Commission. Did you want to say anything in particular about this large and lengthy document?
Though, in fact, like you said, it's large and lengthy. A lot of time has been spent on this with a couple of other commissions as well, so.
And I would also say that I asked that it be put on for information tonight so that you have it, so that you can read it and look the twenty-seventh, it'll be on for information again. And then the public hearing is, is scheduled for the eleventh. So we want to give people a chance to get through all of this. Kathy, do you have any questions immediately at this time?
Um, yeah, Joe, the one thing that popped out at me was the HOAs. I'm assuming because they included the definition in this. Aren't there some subdivisions that have HOAs now?
Uh, yeah, I'm sure there are. The reason that, that got added was when we did that conservation subdivision section. Again, a lot of that was based on some model ordinances that I came across. And they, that's a big component of it because as far as a conservation subdivision, there's usually a requirement for some open space that's included in there. And usually that open space is maintained by a homeowner's association. So it's kind of a, it's kind of a necessary part of having a conservation subdivision.
Yeah. And, but can you just real quickly explain for an HOA, because I've never been involved in them, but I'm assuming if there is a subdivision that's developed with an HOA, the city would still have their, have some part in, in what happens with that? Or is it totally turned over to the residents in that subdivision?
Uh, well, that, that would be another detail that would be outlined in a, a development agreement typically. But usually if, if there is a, you know, an open space and it's not going to be an active park that the city would be involved in maintaining, it would just be turned over to basically its common ownership amongst all the property owners in that subdivision that are members of that HOA. And then there would be their responsibility to do the, the maintenance that would be needed for that. And, you know, that would be the example where a, a development agreement may get into the details of what, what would be required as far as maintenance. And that would, I, I think it would be kind of a case by case basis. You'd have to look at it, see how detailed we want to get as far as, you know, maintenance requirements and so forth.
Okay. That's all. Thank you.
Jason, anything tonight?
Uh, no, nothing tonight.
Okay. Ken, anything tonight?
No, not tonight. I did have a question, but I'll bring it up next time. I need to research more.
Okay. Well, if you can send Joe your question beforehand, maybe he can help you research it. Robin?
She's muted.
I know. I think.
Sorry, thought I pushed the spacebar. I don't have any questions right now.
Sorry, thought I pushed the spacebar, I don't have any questions right now.
Okay, Eileen?
No questions.
Okay, I think we've made the round robin, I don't have any, because I'm on the Plan Commission, so I've seen it a lot, just like Isaac. Okay, uh, D is, uh, in information discussion is, um, the, uh, carryover, budget carryovers from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one. Nicola?
Okay, so each year, um, we, uh, review, uh, mostly CIP projects from, uh, the prior year's budget, and, uh, we, uh, we invite department heads to, request any, um, carryovers for funding that did not get utilized for a project that was delayed or did not take place for some reason, in, um, twen- in the previous year, so, um, and I just lost my, uh, page here, so, give me one moment to get that back up. Okay, here we go. So, um, so in, in, uh, the twenty twenty year, there was, um, requests amounting to a hundred and seven thousand three hundred and ninety dollars for CIP funds, and forty-two thousand eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars for general fund, um, amounts. And there's a schedule that was attached, I did update the schedule, there was one more thing that, um, we added. And so you can see there, um, that is listed, the CIP projects. Um, there were some also that we had already included as part of our twenty twenty-one budget process, that we were going to use, funding that had not been used for something else, and so those are also on here, so that we don't forget about them. Um, and then, and then you can see the general fund request below that. So, uh, I've just opened it up for any questions that anybody might have. Um, and I know that the department directors are on here as well, if you would have any specific pr- pr- questions for them.
Uh, Nicola, can you tell us which specific general fund request, uh, that I missed it, the specific one that was added in your, uh, update?
Sure, uh, so it was the contribution, the, the Friends of the Museum makes a contribution, uh, to the museum, um, to cover, um, or to help to cover operating expenses. Um, and in twenty twenty, the museums also received, um, grants that were awarded to the Friends, um, but also for museum operating expenses in light of COVID nineteen. And so, um, the amount being requested is to carry over the equivalent, of the, uh, grants that were awarded to the Friends, because the museum is about to embark on a capital campaign, and this funding would be, um, essentially seed money or the first, uh, portion of that campaign. Um, so that's the, the carryover request that was added.
The twelve thousand two hundred and thirty-four dollars, okay.
Yep.
Right, okay, uh, let's go around. Kathy, any questions about the carryover?
No questions.
Jason?
Uh, nope.
Ken?
I have a question on the fire station comprehensive study on conceptual planning.
Okay.
It says that the funding sources are ten thousand and thirty thousand. We expended, uh, almost sixteen thousand, so adding the sixteen and twenty-four makes forty thousand. So my question is, uh, it says the project total is seventy-five thousand.
Right, good question, so when we, when we, uh, put together the twenty twenty budget, which is where that seventy-five thousand comes from, um, it was a guesstimate, essentially, at that point, we were, we had decided that we would move forward with a study, but we didn't know how much the study was going to cost, so the seventy-five thousand was kind of a placeholder. And at that time, um, if you can remember back before COVID, that was in the fall of twenty twenty, twenty nineteen, so, who knew what was about to, uh, unfold, but at that time, uh, we, we had, uh, budgeted ten thousand of levy support towards that seventy-five thousand. And it was thought that the, the remainder would have to be through grant funding, or fundraising, or some other funding source, uh, to cover the cost of the study, while it turned out that the study, um, did not cost seventy-five thousand. And so the fundraising, um, was enough to cover the costs of the study, but some of those study costs are coming in, in twenty twenty-one, so that's why we are requesting to ca- carry over that balance of twenty-four thousand. Um, I'm not sure that we're going to use all of that twenty-four thousand, but since it's, um, since it's part of the funding that was raised, um, it made sense to carry it over just in case.
So there was some donation to the seventy-five thousand?
Yes, so there was some.
Yes, there was donations made by the fire department, um, and then there was also donations made through, I think, the local, uh, local foundation, we got, uh, some money there, and then also from a private kind of, citizen, I guess would be the best way to put it, so we got a couple of different donation sources.
Do you want, do you want me to touch on that? The, the American Legion donated five thousand towards it. Um, the Fire Station Membership Foundation donated five thousand, and we received a, uh, five thousand dollar grant from Comteer Financial, towards it, as well as the twenty-five thousand the city committed, to cover all the costs.
And there was also, um, fifteen thousand that was carried over from, um, twenty nineteen. We had budgeted for design work for Highway one fifty-one, and there was some levy match that was, uh, that was budgeted. And because that project got postponed, um, we were able to carry that levy over in support of this project also.
Okay.
Okay.
I knew there were some other sources, and you only listed two, and, so, thank you.
Isaac, any, any questions on the carryovers?
Uh, no questions, but thank you to Nicola and Adam for the explanation on the, uh, fire station study, I was wondering the same thing, so.
Okay, Robin?
No question.
Eileen?
No questions.
Okay, then I guess we'll be ready to move that for action at the meeting on the twenty-seventh. Uh, next, E, flag raising policy, and, uh, I believe this is probably, I'm getting to it, but my recollection is it's Adam.
Yeah, it is correct, um, so obviously, I've been asked the question about whether the city of Platteville has an official flag raising policy. Um, so obviously, reviewing history, uh, I've discovered it appears the city does not really have an official, uh, policy regarding the authorization of requests for community organizations, or special events to, um, raise flags. Uh, so historically, what has occurred is either by a resolution authorized by the common council, like if you recall, the approval granted, granted last year, under resolution twenty dash seventeen, where council members authorized the flying of the LGBTQ plus flag to be flown above City Hall during the month of June twenty twenty. Um, or there was also resolution twenty dash twenty-four authorizing the UN flag to be flown above City Hall during the month of October twenty twenty. So further discussion needs to occur regarding, you know, some of the questions that have been asked by, uh, some of the council members is, well, what is the line, or when is the line drawn by the city of Platteville to either cancel, reject, or prohibit, a particular flag from being requested to be flown above City Hall? Um, also, consideration needs to be taken into how many flags the city of Platteville should authorize in each month. Currently, the flag pole at City Hall has the capacity to hold three flags consisting of the American flag, the Wisconsin state flag, and then there is one open flag space. Uh, so in efforts to kind of move the conversation towards the adoption of a flag raising policy, I crafted the attached example for council members and staff to review and provide suggested edits and alterations. Um, so really, there is no, you know, budget impact, um, in regards to this policy. There obviously could be potential conversation can be had about whether it's prudent to require an application fee or an administration fee. Um, that's obviously for a later date, uh, but essentially, what I'm looking for tonight is kind of feedback, um, from the common council members on whether first and foremost, you would like to see this type of policy created. Um, or, you know, there is consideration to prefer that the city only fly the US flag and the Wisconsin state flag. If the council feels a flag raising policy is prudent, then the city manager is looking for feedback regarding what changes you would like to see regarding the tentative example, so, just to kind of provide, um, you know, further clarification, I put together this policy based on what I found from other municipalities have done. Uh, so essentially, you know, the purpose of this policy is to provide guidelines and regulations for the authorization of requests for community organizations and special event flag raisings, uh, or national and municipal flag standards. Uh, so this policy governs the circumstances under which flags will be flown on municipal flag poles. This policy applies to the flying of flag poles on the municipal flag pole located only at City Hall. Um, all other municipal properties will fly only the American flag. So the following guidelines, uh, should be satisfied to approve the raising of a community organization or special event. So the organization requesting to use the municipal flag pole will, uh, be either a charity or nonprofit organization that benefits the residents of the city, or has local or national significance, um, endorses civic pride. And then they also have to submit the request for a flag raising a minimum of two weeks in advance. Uh, the city will not permit flags in recognition of political parties, religious affiliations, or other international or national flags unless authorized by the common council, such as the UN flag. Uh, so what will happen is the city clerk has the authority to determine the eligibility of each organization. Uh, the raising of any organization group's flag will not violate any previously established city of Platteville ordinance or policy. And the city of Platteville refuses an application to raise the flags of a group or organization that has the potential to negatively reflect the city's image. Uh, the city has the right to reject an organization's group flag, which promotes any form of discrimination, including that based upon religion, national origin, religion, sex, gender, sexual orientation, or age. Um, degrades, slanders, any individual group, city service, event, or program, promotes unlawful behavior, including violence or hate. And then requests for flag raisings will be permitted once per calendar year for a maximum of one month. Uh, the city reserves the right to schedule a flag raising based on the availability, obviously, of the flag poles. And the United States of America flag will always be flown first, followed by the Wisconsin state flag, and then any flag authorized by this policy. Um, so what happens is there is an application essentially that I created that would be filled out by anybody looking to do that. Um, so right now, the way this policy stands is obviously it would provide city staff with kind of the guidance of, uh, processing these requests. And if, you know, city staff had a concern in regards to the particular request, um, what would be done then is that would be brought to the common council's attention for obviously any questions or considerations and approval before that flag would be chosen to, to be flown. So that's kind of the policy, so obviously, this is something that could be on the agenda as many times as we want, and the discussion is if we feel this is warranted, or if we want to go in a completely different direction, uh, that is completely up to the council, so, there we go.
Okay, so flag raising, this is the first time we've seen this, uh, flag raising policy. Uh, so at this point in time, I guess, well, obviously, we probably won't, are looking to move this to, action in this month, but, uh, so now we'll take initial reactions and perhaps suggestions. Um, and I guess the only way we do that is by going around, Kathy?
Okay, um, I am one of the ones that, that raised, um, the question about whether or not there was a policy. Um, and I, I do have a concern, and I want to be very careful in how I word this, because it's not, my comments are not against any group or organization specifically. But I am concerned without a policy, um, the city council, is going to be faced with having to make a decision, um, uh, for an application to fly a flag, that could open the city to a possible discrimination suit. Um, with the times that they are, the culture that we're in, it seems, no matter what you do, somebody is going to take offense to it. And, um, so, the, I, I personally, as a city council rep, do, really do not want to be put in a position as an individual, that would have to vote and judge who is worthy and who is not. Um, because, um, even reading the draft, um, it's, it seems very detailed, but we could get an application that, might sort of fall outside of this, and, um, I do, I mean, I, we obviously would know certain ones that we, we wouldn't want, I mean, if somebody put an application and they wanted a Nazi flag or something. Um, but it could be, because even for something endorsing civic pride, I remember a year ago, there was, um, an incident with the, uh, police flag, the thin blue line flag, um, that we were told was, uh, offended some people. Um, and they demanded it to be removed from the police department, it wasn't even on the flag pole. So, in my opinion, I, I would, I, I really think we need an ordinance, but, um, my, from my perspective, I would like to see it, that the flags above, that are flown above the City Hall in the city of Platteville, only be the US flag and the Wisconsin flag. I'm fully supportive of helping groups do other things, but when it comes to, this particular thing, there, again, it's the times being that they are, you could offend somebody by, putting up anything, and I'm, I'm just trying to be very protective of the city.
Thank you, Ken?
Well, thinking about it, I think I would only prefer the US flag and Wisconsin flag, period.
And Isaac?
I'd agree with what Kathy, pretty much everything that Kathy has stated, as well as what Kenny has stated. If this were to come today, I would vote for just the United States flag and the Wisconsin flag only to be flown above the, uh, City Hall.
And just American flags at all our other facilities. Right now, that I think that's, our other facilities only have a space for one flag, is that correct?
Right.
Okay, and so then it would just be the American flag at the other facilities, because I think we have flags in more than one place in town. Yeah, I don't know how many, that would be interesting to know. Okay, Robin?
Um, I guess this doesn't really address if those facilities could put a flag in a window, um, or somehow display. Uh, so there's that workaround, and I guess I was curious about department head feedback or response, um, to this conversation. And then I think this would be a great example of something to go past the tide committee for discussion before we really, get too far into, um, it, to just take into consideration the comments that might come from there. Um, I hear and appreciate Kathy's comments, I think it's just kind of the reality of the situation, we put all those details out into the conversation. The council, I, I mean, most of the people here in the room have voted to put a flag up a couple times, so, um, I think it's interesting if we would lean in the other direction to completely do away with having a flag when, um, people have voted historically to go ahead and support, um, the one, two that go up. Um, and I also think that it's important when we think about being cautious to not do something to offend, that that is a decision. Inaction is an action, it still speaks some sort of volume if someone is asking for support, and you say, I'm not going to take a stance on that, that vocal, you know, it's a, it's a non-verbal sign that you, are kind of showing support to not support, so, um, I get it, kind of a, a touchy and political area, and I don't even know how I feel, um, I would vote if it came up for conversation, but I feel like we really do need to, um, let it be a robust discussion of what our unintended consequences are to the decision.
Okay, Eileen?
Uh, I think Robin raises some good points, and Adam, you said you referred to some other communities that they had flag policies?
Yeah, I specifically looked at, um, I reached out to kind of some peer, uh, partners who gave some verbiage on this, um, you know, there's also, you know, it's part of the Wisconsin, you know, the International City Managers Association, um, that we are a part of. Uh, a lot of these policies also came from. That we are a part of. A lot of these policies also came from other, you know, not only. International states, so Canada, a bunch of different providences there and and kind of governmental authorities. So it was crafted using kind of a couple of different versions.
And I think the fact that we have one spot on the flag pole by city hall. I mean, that pretty well limits how many flags you could actually put up. For example, if you said one a month, you know, that would be 12 requests max. Um, so the other flag poles that the city owns, are they all just flying the American flag? I've not paid much attention, honestly, but is that, or is that a policy or should that be included? I guess in this policy. I know this policy only refers to the city hall flag pole.
Yeah, so it does say in the in the draft version, I did put in there, all other municipal properties will fly only the American flag. So that's currently what we have in in this draft if it were to move forward.
Okay.
How many flag poles do we have?
I don't know the full number, but we do have a number of them. City Park also has a flag pole for the Wisconsin flag. I know, I mean, the police department has a flag, the the fire department has a flag, we've got the flags in city park. I believe there's one at Legion Field. We used to have them in one or two of the other parks, but I think. Those are gone now. Luke might remember those.
Well, perhaps before we, perhaps somebody could inventory those and make sure that. We have an understanding of if they are one spot, two spot. I don't even know how you know this. We're three spot flag poles. I'm not even, I I I'm not enough of a flag pole. Uh. Historian, or do I have knowledge about flag poles as to how many flags you could fly on them? So perhaps you could bring that information back. Jason, would you like to comment?
Um, yeah, I agree with Robin that this, I think this would definitely be a good. Um, thing to take to the tide committee just to get a lot of difference. Um, eyes and and voices on on this. Um, because, you know, also kind of going with what Robin was saying that, you know, this can be. Um, a difficult area because, you know, certain flags, certain symbols on the outside. You know, just kind of looking at them at face value, you know, we might, we might not think that there's a problem. But unfortunately, sometimes there's a history behind some of it. There, there's kind of things underneath that. Can kind of complicate that. And I think it's important to, you know, especially now that we have a committee. Be able to, you know, look at these and then really kind of, kind of get underneath some of that. So, so we're kind of taking, taking in things into consideration.
Okay, Adam, the next tag committee meeting is likely the 23rd or the 30th of the month, something like that?
It'll be, it's going to be one of those times. We're still setting up the date, but I can definitely bring this to that committee and get their input.
Yeah, I think before we see it again, you should have that. It would also be interesting, I think. Somebody asked if staff had made any notations. And of course, the only flag I can remember for many, many years was the United Nations flag. And I wish I could remember the faculty member at UW Platteville Ted. For the lack of, I just cannot remember his last name, no matter how hard I try. But he was certainly the person who brought that to the attention each year. And for many years, I would say for 20 years, we've, at least 20 years, we've flown the UN flag. So. Okay, well, that's the flag raising policy or flag discussion. So somebody else, I think Robin raised the question about window displays and those kinds of things too. So please have that complete. All right, 2021 city goals quarterly report.
Yes, so obviously, as we do every quarter, we provide you guys with kind of an update on everything that. Was approved for the 2021 city goals and where things are standing. So what you have in your packet here is kind of a list of everything that we've been working on. From the kind of three strategic plan categories that we created, which again was safe, welcoming and engaged community. Thoughtful development and prosperous economy and quality infrastructure amenities and services. So what I would ask is when you guys have a chance, kind of look this over, and if you have any specific questions, please let me know. Otherwise, obviously, I'll answer any that you have tonight. But otherwise, if you need any kind of additional information or further detail, we certainly will provide that.
Okay, does anybody want to have any, any current question about the quarterly goals information that was included in the packet? Kathy? No?
No, very well laid out.
Ken?
Well, I was wondering about when the 53818 is coming out during the summer. And I'm looking at the analyses as far as the fire station is concerned. So. The location of the fire station, we've talked about that some in the first meeting and. I mentioned at that time that I didn't think that the army was the location because it's limited as far as expansion. Also, I look at it as far as drainage stairs, the drainage area goes through the armory underneath, underneath the bottom there. And then also I've gotten a comment that O A Gray, what's going to happen to O A Gray if that's going to be torn down? Will the fire station be torn down to make, will the army be torn down to make a fire station? So those are two questions I have. What's going to happen as far as the tear down of the army, the tear down O A Gray? I don't think that either building should be torn down. So should we be looking for a better location? We looked at these locations back in 2009. They weren't accepted back in 2009. Are there better locations such as near the EMS area, hospital area? So we get, get to a location where you have flatter land and you're away from the residential. And we find another possibility.
Okay, I think that's all still in discussion. So, yep. Okay.
But if the analysis goes out in 53818 and says there are only two places. Then what are you going to have people say? I don't like those?
Yeah, Adam, I'm assuming that's not what the article will say.
Correct. So the the article provides, you know, some information that specifically breaks down, you know, what was in that study. And again, when you read the study, those are, you know, proposed potentials of just, we looked at three sites that were within the area. As, you know, you kind of indicated, Ken, all of those questions that you brought up are valid concerns and questions that would have to be addressed. If you choose any one of those locations to move forward. And obviously, before any of, you know, that decision would be made, there would be, you know, conversations with the council, obviously, conversations with the public. Because as we've, you know, started talking about that information, we have gotten addressed, you know, both myself and Chief Simmons in regards to some of those questions. And, you know, some of those sites are historical, have been part of the historical society. So if you were to choose to do anything there, you have to take that into account, you know, just like you indicated, Ken, with just, you know, any type of demolition. You want to be very cautious in whether or not that can occur, as you indicated with some of the sites. So a lot of that, again, is is we needed to at least identify some potential locations that could give kind of the image of what. You know, potential new fire station would look like, and that's why those were chosen.
Okay. Isaac, any comments on this quarterly report?
No comments.
Robin?
Sorry, I'm working with two different screens. No, at the moment, I have in front of me the TID extension, and I'm trying to remember the. 921 East Madison, the projects approved. Anyone catch up on that one again? Oh, conversion. Okay, these are houses. This is why I'm not recognizing addresses. They're actual houses approved for that remodel kind of funding. That's great. Okay. And I don't, I don't have any other questions. I think my other question in my mind is not relevant at the moment. So, okay.
Continue with her comment. 360 East Lewis, all these are conversions to homeowner houses. Is that for Joe Carroll?
That's correct. They were rentals and now they're owner occupied.
Okay.
Hey. Uh, Eileen?
No questions.
Jason?
No questions.
Okay, and I have none. So we'll move on to the city of Platteville mission statement.
Yeah, so as we've had this on, on the agenda for a couple of times. So again, one of the kind of themes we had with our strategic plan was to, you know, when we're talking about marketing and obviously talking about telling. The story of Platteville is, you know, the majority of kind of publications or information that the city kind of creates. You know, normally has either a vision statement or a mission statement. So one of the goals that we obviously had was to create or formally adopt a mission statement. That would increase the visibility and importance of Platteville's history. So just looking through, kind of gave you examples of obviously what other municipalities have. So what we have are really two kind of options, or I guess what I would say are examples that are out there. In our 2013, you know, comprehensive plan, there was a vision statement that was created, which indicates, you know, the Platteville community is a safe, accessible place. With a small town atmosphere that values open space, education, recreation, culture, and wellness for all its citizens. The community is a regional center for business and higher education. The community embraces, promotes, and preserves its history. Agriculture, economy, and scenic rural landscape. The community's focus is on planned growth, affordable housing, economic development, and sustainability initiatives. So again, just looking at a tentative example that, you know, other municipalities had, and I kind of pulled from. Is, you know, the city can obviously stay with the vision statement that was created in 2013 if the council feels that that still kind of, you know, checks all the boxes. Otherwise, in asking for input from council members and also from staff, this is kind of a tentative example that was created. Where it's the city of Platteville is a place of rich history and distinct character encompassed within the Driftles region of Wisconsin. The city strives to be recognized as an inclusive, safe, sustainable, welcoming, and engaged university community. It is the mission of the city government to provide an outstanding level of municipal service with integrity and transparency. The city is dedicated to being a regional center for business and aspires to be the premier visitor destination location in Grant County, Wisconsin. So obviously, what we're looking for is kind of feedback on where you would like to go. So that way then, when, you know, I'm directing staff in regards to updates to the website, or when we're putting in planning documentation. Or anything going forward, what, you know, what would you like us to use? Would you like us to kind of keep with the vision statement that was created in 2013? Or go with something more that is the tentative example, which obviously can have, you know, tweaks and changes that you guys see fit.
Uh, this has been on the agenda for like the last three or four or five, I'm thinking probably at least three meetings, maybe four. I don't know if people have sent suggestions your way or not, Adam. Uh, but I do suspect that you would like to see if we could move this to some kind of action item. And decide whether or not we're going to stay with the 2013 vision statement. Whether we're going to look at the new tentative statement, perhaps make any changes, additions, alterations. Or if there's something entirely different.
Correct.
So, uh, and this becomes, I think, particularly challenging when we're doing this on Zoom. Because it's hard to have that back and forth conversation that sometimes results in that kind of change. And so, um, Kathy, do you have any words of wisdom to add?
Whoa, words of wisdom. Um, I I know I brought this up, I think, at the last meeting. So we're looking at a mission statement. And, um, I understand that there is a vision statement. I've always been, um, taught that a mission statement is short. And a mission statement is something sort of like an elevator speech. That if if the city council is going to approve a mission statement, we should be able to recite it without looking at a note. Right. This, I I really like the tentative example that you have here, Adam. Um, and I think it that it definitely kind of refreshes the 2013. Um, gives it, I I don't know, maybe a little more life. Um, and you just don't want things to get stagnant, but I'm I'm curious. If we want both a mission and vision statement. I I would suggest that we do, but for a mission statement to come up with a very short one or two lines. That everybody will always have at the tip of their tongue.
Yeah, Kathy, I agree with you. I see this more as a replacement for the vision statement rather than as a mission statement. It's just, yeah, the elevator speech that what you can, what you can say as you go up the elevator. If you ever watch John McGivern and his program on PBS about. Going to communities and he gives somebody the last 30 seconds to tell why their community is the best community ever. That's like a mission statement. That's like that elevator speech. And this is way too long. I agree. It's big long. Uh, Kathy, words of wisdom. You are unmuted. You can talk.
Who are you talking to?
You. Words of wisdom.
Words of wisdom. Well, looking at the present vision statement. I find the word a little bothersome at the end, which says sustainable initiatives. So I wonder, what are all the initiatives? When you put in words like that and and you wonder, what does this all include? I always believe in trying to make things a little more definite. The other one, the tentative example, I think it's. Overall, I think it's it's a good example. So those are my comments.
Okay, Isaac, words of wisdom.
Um, I think the tentative example is pretty good at this point, but I do also agree with you and Kathy in keeping it, you know, in short, to the point. So.
Robin?
Um. I want to speak to Ken's comment about sustainability initiatives. And I would say that has been probably one of the things about serving on council that I've enjoyed is when we actually get into. Delving into options of pursuing sustainability initiatives, but I wouldn't say we always have the staff timer funds to really pursue them. So thinking about things like water conservation, social justice falls under sustainability. Doing our city swap in May, those kinds of things. I think it's great to keep that as a motivator in there. So I see sustainable down in the the new one as well. I wouldn't want to lose that. Um, I think that third sentence in there, maybe that's the concise mission statement. Starts out just simple integrity and transparency are pretty key and important. Honestly, I feel like I have not sat with these paragraphs and really given them a good enough. So I need that action items thing probably. And again, I feel like this is maybe a tied committee or even. Yeah, maybe other commissions should take a look at it and see if they really feel like why they serve on a committee or commission is being. Addressed there in those statements. There was one other comment. I'm not remembering it right now, so I will pass. That's enough for me.
Okay, Eileen?
No, I have nothing to add at this time.
Jason?
Um, I like the tentative example. as using that as a replacement for the vision statement. And I agree that it would be nice to have a more succinct mission statement as well.
Okay, so Adam, I think you've heard the consideration, I think that the staff in, I know you have talked that staff have looked at this. It might be something that you want to have run by Tide or others. And then I would really like to see us take action on this in May because I, I don't really want to carry this thing over every time for months on end like we have. So and, and council members, if you see something missing in this vision statement, if you think there needs to be change in the vision statement, because that's why I'm going to start calling it, that this is a replacement of our vision statement by all means. And if you have the 10 words that we can all remember as our mission statement based on this vision, then write down those 10 words that we can all, 10 or 12 or 14, whatever it is, words we can all memorize and say about Platteville. And I would challenge you to do it. You know, just think about it. I mean, if you had, if you right now, somebody came up to you and said, tell me the essence of Platteville, you think about what you would say in 12 or 15 words. And just write it down. I think we'd all be surprised at, at maybe doing that task. So but I think it's a good task.
Barb?
Yes, Kathy?
Just a comment. If, if we're looking at a vision statement from the city, I agreed to run it by with the idea of running it by Tide, but what about the other boards and commissions? Because
Great idea.
When, when the council looks at adopting it, it's going back to those, they need to have buy-in, they need to understand too. And it might help to have their buy-in at the beginning.
And I don't think, I think that's a good idea. I, and Adam, you're not going to like this, but I question that inclusion about the mission of city government in the vision statement. I'm, I'm not sure why we say what the mission city government is in the vision of Platteville, but I can be it's a good thing to leave. I'm just, I've just always thought that was an interesting, an interesting addition. So, okay. So we'll get some more info.
I keep forgetting, meeting after meeting. We are in the Driftless area, like capital letter Driftless area. So that's significant and a title in and of itself. So if we could emphasize that rather than just lowercase Driftless region, I think that actually is pretty important.
The Driftless area is an identified area. I agree, Robin. And it is pretty important. Okay, let's go on to include diversity and equity update.
Yeah. So just to kind of, again, to provide the update. So the Tide, the Task Force for Inclusion, Diversity, and Equity, they met on March 26, 2021. And what occurred at that meeting was Task Force members met with Jonathan Brown, who used to work at UW-Platteville, but now is based out of the Minneapolis area. Jonathan assisted the Task Force with reviewing the city of Platteville's Employee, Volunteer, Elected Official, Working Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion Statement. So what Jonathan is going to be doing is he's going to be providing kind of suggestions and recommendations of how the Task Force can make updates to the statement as well as look at to identify, you know, kind of training opportunities and suggestions for the Task Force to look at developing the future meetings. So kind of during the conversation with Jonathan, you know, he walked through and asked, you know, kind of some probing questions about, you know, well, in the diversity statement, it says this, what does the city mean by that? Or what are some of the things you would like to see? So what he's going to be coming back at the next meeting is kind of providing, you know, some different things to kind of consider or look at for the future for Tide to kind of develop or consider tweaks to make to the statement, or, you know, different things to kind of consider from the group standpoint. The other thing that the Task Force is also going to be looking at is the webinars that have now been posted from UW-Platteville's Midwest Cultural Inclusive Conference Series to determine if there are programs or concepts that obviously could be done by the city. Also, as far as city staff, we are going to be working with Jamie and members of the Southwest Rainbow Alliance to kind of dive deeper into the following discussion areas that were discussed with Jamie on Friday, March 5. And also we've been talking in further meetings since then, but really we kind of want to focus on a couple of different areas and look to do almost kind of have Jamie Collins and somebody from the Southwest Rainbow Alliance come in and run some scenario workshops where they'll be meeting with different kind of departments and going through scenarios of, you know, specifically with our police department. You know, when there's somebody that has pulled over and their driver's license says one thing, but they identify as another. You know, kind of walking through, you know, some different kind of role-playing scenarios to kind of think about and kind of, you know, start discussing different ways that maybe our policies and procedures, you know, need to be updated or reconsidered. You know, same thing with, with, you know, our other departments. I know Luke and the Park and Rec have had some conversations about, you know, forums and different, you know, marketing tools to kind of review. Our DPW department is going to kind of run through, you know, potentially some scenarios of interacting with various issues ranging from, you know, the cemetery to obviously, you know, pick up different options there. And then also working to look at our buildings and kind of discuss, you know, potential, you know, policies or changes or alterations that could be made to our various municipal buildings that obviously will become more welcoming to the LGBTQ community. The other thing obviously that we continue to do is the bias reporting discussions that the Chief McKinley and I are a part of, where we're meeting with the Platteville School District and UW-Platteville to kind of review continual policies and kind of known issues that have come up either at the university or the school district or between the city and bouncing off ideas of, of different ways to look at reporting and, and, you know, different matters that way. So that's kind of the things that we continue to review. Obviously, we're also looking at a variety of different trainings potentially that we can go to. I know Director Jones from the Library found one that the city of Madison is putting on over the month of May. They have a couple of different series in regards to inclusivity. So we're going to be looking at that to see if that makes sense for staff, but that's kind of the quick update for you.
Okay, does anybody have any questions on inclusivity, diversity, and equity update? Kathy?
No questions.
Ken?
My question is eventually what is the overall goal here? You're talking about different things. What do you want to finally produce at the end here? Just like we are talking about many different things and what's going to be the, all the outcomes from this? What's the action?
Yeah. So the, the action that definitely the, the two things specifically that the Task Force for Inclusivity, Diversity, and Equity were tasked with based on our kind of strategic planning is for that organization to continually be reviewing the employee, volunteer, and elected official working document and providing kind of any recommendations or changes that would then be brought back, obviously, to the council. The other kind of major, you know, initiative that Tide is working on that's part of the strategic plan is in 2022, we have a goal of, of doing some form of a Tide-related event. So that is one of the main things that this group is being tasked with, has been starting to think about what that could be, whether that would be a series of, whether it's webinars or, you know, some type of a promotion. So those are all the things that this group is starting to kind of think about or look at. And that's where, you know, one of the things we're going to be looking at is the different webinars, as I talked about, that were done by UW-Platteville and see, you know, maybe would they apply to, you know, a city-specific webinar that we would want to do. So those are obviously two of the, two of the main tasks. The other thing obviously that we're hopeful that this group kind of becomes is again, a sounding board for anything that is related to inclusivity, diversity, and equity. So as we've talked about, you know, in the bias reporting group that the chief and I sit on, when we are made aware of kind of incidents that somebody may feel has been related to, you know, either diversity or, and, you know, they felt equity or specifically they were not, you know, inclusive, or there was an incident, we're hopeful that this group is a place where, you know, people can feel comfortable that they can bring those issues to. And then they can get, you know, escalated up the chain to either being reviewed by myself or potentially brought to some of these other organizations where if we're notified of an issue that somebody feels happened at the school district, we now have some direct contacts through a lot of these meetings that we feel we can at least give the heads up and have that investigated. You know, the same thing with UW-Platteville. If we find out that a student has an incident that occurred either on campus or off campus, we're hoping that these kind of continual conversations and meetings start to create, you know, the framework for people to feel comfortable to bring any issues forward.
Okay, Ken?
Yep, thank you.
Isaac?
No questions or comments.
Robin?
A quick question, I guess, is along the conversation of city hall restrooms, et cetera. I know Luke's having discussions and putting thought to, but the city pool is probably a pretty clear place where a person, a transgender person or transitioning person may hit a wall at the front desk trying to pick which side to go and, and how there may be a reaction one way or the other. So just wanting to point that one out is definitely needing maybe some attention. And then along Ken's question, he just kind of got me thinking, how do we measure improvement along this line? Because, you know, Adam's answers were kind of some clear distinctions of like, this is something we're getting done, but the very intangible idea of citizenship sense of feeling welcomed and supported and not feeling like they're being made to feel like an outsider or not heard when they bring a certain type of complaint forward. So I suppose it probably is something we should try to define in the sense of, you know, not only how many events or actions do we host, you know, speaker, et cetera, but how do people really feel we are creating an improved dynamic in the city? So somehow we have to measure satisfaction or, and then show proof of improved satisfaction over the years. So I think that puts out a pretty big question of how do you take something vague and make it measurable for Ken and, and all of us involved to feel like this is time well spent when it's, you know, just, it's never something you can put a measure on is avoiding a negative situation. How do you, how do we measure how many things didn't happen that we wouldn't want to have happened because we were being proactive or building a supportive community? So thank Ken for the, the challenge, but I guess I'd put it out to you. How would you measure it down the road? Help us. How would you find satisfaction in seeing that we're doing a job well done over in these initiatives? So.
Eileen?
No questions or comments.
Jason?
Um, just clarification for you, Adam, in terms of the bias reporting. So are, are you seeing like Tide as being the group where people are going, like specifically, community members are going to go to if they do have a concern? Or did I read that wrong?
No, I mean, that's one option we want to provide them. Obviously, that's going to be, you know, anytime you have a public meeting, that's going to be difficult. So I think we obviously want to have people feel comfortable that they can come to that group and voice a concern. And it will be taken obviously very seriously. But, you know, one of the things specifically with this bias reporting group is, you know, a lot of it is if I hear specifically that there's a complaint or the chief does that is related to any one of those entities, we now have kind of a direct link to both the university and also the school district that we can bring those issues to and ensure that somebody is going to review them. That is directly from a bias reporting lens. So, you know, specifically when we hear concerns, whether it's, you know, US council members or we hear from the public, I get an email or a phone call about an incident that occurred, whether it's at the school district or the university, I now have direct contacts that I can go to. Same thing with the chief, where we now have, you know, some, some better reporting abilities to get those concerns addressed or reviewed by the appropriate parties.
Okay.
And that would be vice versa. So if, if they hear in the school about something that happens with the city, same thing or the university. So I think it's the channel, the opening of the channel so that people are sharing and addressing issues instead of this constant chatter down here that nothing, nobody seems to know to address. Okay. COVID-19. This has been on our agenda way too long.
Disagree with you. So obviously, as of today, the past 14 days, Grant County has averaged 6.7 new confirmed COVID-19 cases daily. So that definitely, we are seeing a little bit of an uptick, obviously, in the number of cases per day than in previous months. So as of four o'clock PM today, there's been 4,809 total confirmed cases of COVID-19, 4,675 individuals who have recovered, 85 total deaths of people who have tested positive for COVID-19, five total deaths of a person who was probable case for COVID-19. The university is reporting that they have administered 30,072 tests from their health services facility. Out of those tests, 97 students have tested positive for COVID-19. They've had four external positive tests from students that have reported COVID-19 and three external positive tests have been confirmed for employees. Again, UW-Platteville is indicating that they are testing about 580 students a day. UW system has just issued some new guidance that both Barb and Eileen and I heard about today where if a, either a student has received both of their vaccinations and it's been past the 14 days, they are no longer required to test. So that is a new policy that they have issued. So as of April 13th, it's been reported that 3,669,405 vaccines have been allocated into the state of Wisconsin and over 3,572,358 have been administered. Grant County, as of today, has indicated 34% of the residents or 17,496 have received at least one dose of the vaccine. The county-sponsored community testing is occurring Tuesdays again in Lancaster. They have now moved from the fairgrounds to that facility is now the former Shopko building that they have in Lancaster. That is also where they are doing COVID-19 vaccines as well as now occurring at there as well as they have also started doing vaccines at the Broski Center on Thursdays. So that is something that we are working with them to try to promote more now that their first one occurred last week. So Jody and I are going to be working with Grant County and trying to figure out the best way to get that information out, obviously, in a press release to the public so that they are aware that option is available. So again, one of the things that occurred is on March 30th, 2020, Governor Evers announced that everybody 16 and older is eligible for the COVID-19 vaccine. So you can either contact your health professional or there is a bunch of different resources available, not only on our information, but the Grant County's webpage as well as the Wisconsin DHS that allows you to find pharmacies that are doing it, facilities such as Walmart and other entities that are doing that as well, as well as your medical provider and also the county is doing that as well. So we have issued all that information out to employees that if they are interested, they are now definitely eligible. So we have had employees, obviously, that have been taking up those offers to receive the vaccination. The other thing obviously that occurred on March 31st, 2021, the Wisconsin Supreme Court struck down Governor Evers statewide mask mandate. The court ruled four to three that Evers violated state law by unilaterally issuing multiple emergency orders to extend the mandate for months. It founds that Evers needed legislative approval to issue more orders after the expiration of the initial 60-day mandate. So some of the questions obviously that we have started to be asked is how does this affect the city of Platteville? So if you recall, the common council on December 15th, 2020 passed Resolution 20-31, declaring a state of emergency to be in effect till June 30th, 2020. Within that resolution, it speaks to the fact that the common council finds a face covering requirement is Uh, within that resolution, it speaks to the fact that the common council finds a face covering requirement is necessary for the public health, safety, protection and welfare. Um, so in conjunction with recommendations from Grant County Health Department, Southwest Health, uh, the Wisconsin Department of Health and Human Services and the CDC. Uh, the city has continued to require the utilization of face coverings when inside municipal-owned buildings. Um, or outside on municipal-owned property where social distancing is not possible. Uh, although the Wisconsin Supreme Court has ruled against the statewide mask mandate, um, until further reprimations have been prevented by, presented by our health professionals. Uh, the city of Platteville obviously is going to continue to require masks to be worn inside our facilities and outside properties. Um, further, again, we have, you know, indicated to a lot of our media sources, um, that back in August of twenty-twenty, the council did pass a resolution. Ushing, urging its business leaders and employees, nonprofit organizations, um. To continue practicing the social distancing guidelines and, uh, you know, wearing a mask. Um, so those are all things that, you know, we continue as part of our kind of emergency operations team meets. Um, on a weekly basis now to kind of review, uh, the health professional and most up-to-date recommendations. Uh, we continue to meet with kind of organizations that are planning, um, events and, you know, continue to ask them, uh, if they're utilizing. Uh, municipal facilities that we do require masks, um, or they come up with kind of a, uh, uh, operational plan. That can either be presented to the council if they're going to be asking for a street closing permit. Um, or specifically to our team that then kind of reviews to ensure that that we are following all of the, um, proper guidelines. Uh, so right now, kind of the city's intention is, again, to continue to operate under the state of emergency until June thirtieth. And then at that point in time, um, we will be reviewing with kind of, uh, all of our health partners. Um, to determine at that point in time, what i- what makes sense. In talking, you know, with the majority of council members, um, that has kind of been the, the thought process is we are going to continue to operate with Zoom meetings. Um, until that emergency declaration has come to an end, and then tentatively, right now, we will be looking, um, to return to the council chambers in July. Um, and then reviewing kind of what the recommendations would be, uh, in regards to mask guidelines and obviously social distancing. Um, you know, same thing, that's kind of what we have been working with events, is that, you know, we are looking that after, uh, kind of in July is when we will be looking to renew. A lot of the, um, you know, kind of big-scale events that we have had. Um, we've been working with, obviously, all of those partners to determine, you know, what makes the most sense and talking with Grant County when we've been approached about. Occupancy limits or or different things like that, um, and kind of reviewing what other municipalities and also county, uh, health departments are doing as well. So. That's the update I have for you.
Okay, folks. Like I said.
A question, Barb.
Sure.
Need to register to get their shot at the Broski Center, or is that a walk-in?
I.
So, y- yeah, it it depends. Typically, I mean, to, they are requiring that you register, but depending on the availability of the vaccine. We did notice last Thursday, um, that they did have, uh, some extra vaccine available. So Grant County then kind of notifies all of the, uh, they notified, you know, Southwest Hospital, they notified us. And we kind of sent out, um, a mass information out to the public notifying that they will just let you walk in, so. Uh, typically, they are requiring that you register ahead of time, um, but depending on kind of the amount of registrations or the amount of available vaccine. Um, they then, you know, potentially would be doing what they did last week, where they would then open it up again to the public and let everybody know.
Okay, and that's Grant County Health Department. You can get the registration link there.
Correct.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, I think that concludes our information and discussion agenda. We do have a closed session scheduled for Wisconsin statute nineteen eight-five parent one parent E. Deliverating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds or conducting, conducting. Other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. And this is again specifically about economic development. So I would ask for a motion to go to closed session and from closed session where we do not expect to take action. Or do not have action scheduled to then adjourn from closed session.
So will.
Second.
We have a motion by Isaac and a second by Eileen to go to closed session and then, uh, after closed session to adjourn. Uh, without taking action, with, uh, expecting no action. Candace will vote.
Dos.
Yes.
Killian.
Yes.
Klein.
Yes.
Danley.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Cop.
Yes.
Arx.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, folks, uh, we'll see you shortly. Uh, you'll need to log out of this meeting and log into your. Other closed session meeting, so I will see you shortly.